All right, welcome to the July 10th Board Trustees Meeting. Let's all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Delia, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Walk through the perfect time.
Would you like to read again your card? I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic which stands on its nation under God and in this world, liberty and justice for all.
Perfect timing. All right, well, we're gonna start the meeting off with a special presentation from Inspector Vitelli of the NCPD. Thank you, Officer, or Inspector Vitelli.
Don't form a debate.
No.
Evening, Inspector Vitelli, Commander Officer, the sixth precinct. I've been there about a year now. A bit of a handle on things. There've been some concerns in Flower. Couple of weeks ago, on the, actually, excuse me. The, call it the second week in June, we had some, alright, on the ninth, the navigator on it here?
I do not believe so.
Had a car stolen from a driveway. On the 10th, there were three houses that had cars broken into. I wouldn't wanna say broken into because they just opened the doors. So I did a bit, did a little bit of a dive. Went back three months because data much older than that isn't that accurate and things change around the springtime. And I was actually very pleasantly surprised. I was expecting, I was expecting to see worse. Not worse, maybe more crime. I was actually amazed by, in, since, going back three months, I have to work. April. There was that one burglary that happened recently, which I'm sure everyone's aware, which was pretty scary. That was kinda scary.
Can you brief us on what happened with burglary?
Well, it was my home, so I'd be glad to hear the details.
You can say anything, go ahead.
Yeah.
So we can all hear?
What?
Can we hear the details?
Yeah, sure. So I came, is it okay? I speak?
Yes, please.
Came home at 12:30 in the afternoon. There was a car in my driveway. I was not sure if my husband had called somebody to do work and forgot to tell me. Went into my garage to put my bicycle in there. Started thinking it's a suspicious car. Fast forward, I got back out to my driveway, was about to approach the car, the car backed out and sped down Port, onto Port Boulevard. Floored the license plate. I called 911 right away. They had come in through the side door, they crowbarred and broke down the door. Opened drawers, nothing was stolen. My neighbor's camera showed that they got there at 12:27, rang my front door, two individuals, nobody answered, went around the side. I got home at 12:34. They did not take anything because I obviously interrupted them. I would like to say that the, I called 911, they were there probably within three minutes. And then three more cars showed up. The crime scene group came, they took fingerprints. They have intelligence that there had been some issue in Suffolk County, I believe, and they were trying to link what had happened. So thankfully, I was fine because I didn't come five minutes earlier and see them up in my bedroom, but it was my, it was my fault. That was broken into.
And they're exactly the same. Very, very accurate. But in the course of that, since, mind, we're going since April, started April 1st, just an easy number. We categorize crimes by severity. Burglaries, grand larcenments, means a grand or more, a thousand dollars or more. Heavy larcenments, which is less than that. In the entire village, since April, there have been only four instances of a grand larceny. Three of those were scams or identity thefts type deal. Bank of town information, things along those lines happen. And one of them was someone put his debit card down at Citibank and walked away from it and went back, wasn't there. And unless I'm mistaken, the sort of crime people are worried about are not so much the identity thefts or, or person leaving their wallet at the bank and coming back. Well, it's a bad thing. We get concerned about people coming into your neighborhoods, sneaking around and doing things. Alright? There have been, there were two stolen cars in the village in all those months. One of them was a valet at, I suppose, Lamani?
Lamani.
The great occasion, the valet, again, that's not someone coming to the village. The other one was Lincoln Navigator that was stolen on the 10th. And on the 10th, there were three cars that were broken into. When I looked at the numbers-
Officer Vitelli? I'm sorry, Commander Vitelli. It's not you, Vitelli, I'll get it right one day. Both of those cars were recovered, correct?
Yes, both cars were recovered. Actually. One in Suffolk, one, I believe, Port-
Queens. No, I thought First Hills. The Lincoln.
Yeah, that one was, oh, the Bronx.
Oh, it was the Bronx, I'm sorry.
Usually, usually it's kind of in Newark.
Yeah.
But the simplest way not to get your car stolen or broken into is not to leave the fob in. Wait, so cars nowadays, as modern cars can't be stolen without the fob. There are some people who say, oh, they do electronic. There's a couple of specific lower-end model Prias and Hyundai's that do have some sort of, I'm not an electronics guy, I'm an old Dodge and old Ford. That they can do it. But these are not the cars we see getting stolen. We see people leaving their keys in their car. The mirrors on today's cars, when you take the fob out and bring it in the locker, it closes, which is quick, because that way, if you're on the road somewhere, there's a black mirror. Also, let's everyone know, when the fob isn't a car. I was driving through the Americana parking lot a couple of nights ago, talking to my daughter, I said on the phone, she's in Florida, hey, there's one, there's one, there's one. That's how not to hide your car stolen. Now, people say, well, that's just blaming the victim of the crime. Not blaming someone because they get their car stolen. But we all put, you know, if a person gets spat out the windshield in a car accident, I'm gonna say, why was it the moron wearing a seatbelt? Again, you know, feel bad for the person, but there are things we can do to make ourselves a little safer. This is an incredibly safe village. I was very happy when I saw those numbers. It was just the fact that it happens all on one night, which is actually a good thing. I would've been more concerned if there's one on one night and then a week later another. That meant they're coming back to the fishing hole, because they found out, because they caught a few. Two days later, or the next day, when we spoke?
It was either a day or two later.
A day or two later, I spoke with the mayor. And even before I spoke with him, I saw what happened and we, every, every day, I put out a strategy for my guys, tell them where to, where I want them going. And we concentrated. And the mayor came up with actually a good idea, which is funny because all of us in the precinct, they said, and why don't you, why don't you have them go drive around with their lights, not, not the flash, the red and blues, but we have alley lights as well as rear lights. And I said, well, you know, he's gonna get complaints if a people with the light shining on the window, and good for him, he said, well, I really don't care. And I don't know if it's working, but there hasn't been, not one here since then. We put the sign up on Pope, I don't see the sign recently, Pope Washington Boulevard, which was the mayor asked for. Took it, you know, we got it there and it's, and we react to where the intelligence is. It's all intelligence, like police in the Nassau County. Some people wondering why the mounting unit was over at Americana. Of course, we had a car taken from there last week. It's also, you wanna put, it's, if they see us, they'll go somewhere else. Now, do I really want them to steal cars in Queens or Westchester? No, I don't. Or let it count? No, I don't. But I really, really don't want them to steal here. So we do our best to drive them away from here, let them see us, they'll go to stop the car, they haven't done anything, take down the information, go to report. Of course, this person from Newark is here at 2:00 in the morning and no reason to be. And those all go in a little bit of a database, and then they'll drive away. Do that enough times, they'll go to, you know, Westchester or Connecticut or St. Louis. But we do, we drive around, and we drive around this village a lot. All the honor of energy you've seen. We get one complaint, right, about the light shining in the window?
One of my neighbors complained.
Okay.
But it's okay, I'd rather have-
Yeah.
That's how I know, I see them at nighttime, I see them.
Part of it is for most to see, part of it is for you guys to see too. Of course, it's, I know the numbers, safe, things are safer. If you don't feel that way, it's a feeling of discomfort. And that's a scare.
Well, also, we have an alarm system that we didn't use. And when I asked the police, they said, what can we do? He said, you gotta use your alarm. Like, all the time. We use it when we're home now, when I'm in the house alone, we use it all the time. But we didn't. He said, use the alarm.
Who's got a big dog? They have big dogs? What kind?
A brown dog. A burning dog.
Oh, burning dog.
It's pretty crazy.
Yeah, I listen to them, they're all scared. There you go.
I have a fake dog. It's a little box that he gave me in my front door. It's called Hercule, using the word Amazon. It's sensitive to movement in the box. The Amazon dog is pretty-
I'll tell you, um-
Everyone, everyone on the internet knows that now.
Look, I'm gonna show you color. Everyone's here, you're friends, it's okay. I've been doing this job for a long time, with 30, 12, 30 years now. And I gotta tell you, I only went to one house one time where there was a dog that got burglarized, and that dog was kept in a, not a crate, but a fenced-in area. Person probably looking, so that one's not gonna bother me. I gotta tell you, dogs are great. My dog is scared of everything, so she barks. That's just loud, deep barks, do the walls. Rest. It's, um, that was my wife. But she barks loudly. Now, if they look in the window and see, and see Hercules going, I don't, then again, maybe they won't see, they'll just wonder, where is this dog? I ask things like, I ask anything like that. But things like that do work. You know, that, it's, they'll see, it's, the idea is, if you harden your, your home so it's not, and, you know, and he's not gonna go to your house, he's gonna, you know, that's too much trouble, I'll go to his doorstep. I don't want him to go to your house. But push him away, push him away. And that's, that's the idea. Alarm systems, you don't really get a lot of nighttime burglaries, again, because it's a, um, it causes problems for them. They don't wanna confront someone because now there's a whole of the world there. And they don't know if the person they're confronting may or may not be a hunter or not. So they, they don't generally like to confront people. Most burglars are not violent people. If there are any, they wanna get their stuff, go on, get out. See a lot of them breaking in only to get the charges too. Who keeps the keys besides me who keeps their keys in a bowl right by the door? I need to, you know, I have my wallet, and my, and my badge, or whatever, right there. I tell myself every time I do, you know, I really should put that somewhere else, but I don't. I do lock, at least lock the car doors though. But they'll hear my dog walk in my house. Things like that, though. Just make it difficult. And that actually works. And call us. Two of them, one, you see someone driving around the neighborhood, and it's an out-of-state plate, odds are, they're probably not visiting someone. They're there for more than two minutes, and they're definitely not, because if they're leaving someone's house, they're driving to one of the boulevards. Or they're going to someone's house, it's gonna take them a minute or two to get there. Call us. You know, people like, oh, it's, I wanna bother you. No. We're not, we're not the ones who are firing. We're here 24/7, and we like being bothered. Why, why we took this job? Give us something to do. Alright? That'll be different, as in, but, but, but give us something to do. Give, give us something. Give, I see this a little weird. Okay, someone's on the way, we'll go there, and they'll get there pretty quickly, especially at night, when there's no traffic. If anyone wants to ask me any questions, okay. I left out some of the other things here, like auto, we responded to others, there were auto accidents here, there were aid cases here, any, any, any of the ones that happens in one of those parking lots up on Northern Boulevard, the ones where those were there. I left those out, right, because that's not what people do. I was even thinking about naming out the grand larcenments too, because none of them were really involving the village and the residents. But I figured, put them in there just so you can see, that's what's going on. Also, the scams are a problem. First of all, call you now. I can guarantee that if someone calls you, how old are you? Yeah, I'm gonna have that. But if someone, if someone calls you and says, hey, listen, your son was just in an auto accident, I'm the lawyer, the sheriff, the this, the that, the that, the other list, and this is what's going on. It's not, it's not what's going on. It's not how we operate. It is. Alright? So just say, really? A, can I speak to him? B, what's the, if you are, if you're actually worried, B, what's the, where's the municipality? Oh, this person's in the hospital, which hospital? Look a little closer, call the kid. Alright? Even now, I don't know how they do it, but even now have ways they can make a person sound off. Alright? But if it's not their phone, oh, hey Joey, how you doing? Well, they spoof phones. Hey Joey, I'm gonna call you on your phone, okay? Call Joey's phone. And if Joey picks up and says, says, yeah, mom, what's wrong, might have been, leave you alone, then all's good. And then call us. Of course, we can actually find them. They can sometimes trace those numbers. But I can guarantee that no one's going to need you to leave cash, give them a bundle of cash, or like the lady who they had leave gold bars twice, or the ones who wired, wired money to them.
And they're not gonna ask about gift cards, correct?
Yeah, the government doesn't take gift cards. We don't, we don't take gift cards, we don't take money grams, we don't take, we don't take stuff like that.
No, it's happened. One of our residents got a gift card scam.
Yes.
People got $6,000 worth of gift cards.
You get that in Walgreens and you sign it, it says on the gift card, you know, just be aware and stuff. It's, you just, you just have to think, people, the scams, the scams what's killing us right now. That's what, that's what's driving our numbers. Unfortunately, there's nothing I can do about it, it's really frustrating. Of course, at least if it's a number that I could do something about, I can. Open up any questions, remember.
So I'm gonna open the floor to Ms. Draghi, because she wanted to show the video, which-
Which Draghi is?
Well, my two cars were broken into on my driveway in Long Country Club.
Alan, can you kill the lights for me for two seconds?
Both of my cars are locked. I make sure they're locked, it's a sound alarm, and they got into my car.
You want me to, you want me to play your video now?
And this is my car, three hoodies, three hoodies at my car at 2:30 in the morning. And now they're going in my backyard, which is gated and locked, and they're in my backyard looking in my windows, my whole back is all windows and doors, and they're looking in my backyard of the house right now, in my yard. And they can see my whole entire house and belongings in the back. Then they're coming out, and now they're going in the front of my home and looking in all of my front windows, in all of my rooms, in my entire first floor.
And you were home, you were sitting?
And I was home upstairs on the second floor, the car alarms never went off, they were in and out of both of them. They left my husband's car, which was next to mine, both of his doors were left wide open all night. And there's the car at the foot of the driveway waiting for them with their lights on, another driver waiting. And the three of them were still in my front of the yard, looking at my home, all of it's wide open. I don't have privacy shades or blinds, but I do have the sound alarm. They didn't come in, thankfully. But then, so ransacked both of our cars, took the cash, coins, money, and left. But on my video, they came back an hour later and walked there again, waiting, were they coming back again, thinking about breaking the window, coming in? They came back an hour later, and it's on my video. So from there, they went down block and hit other houses. That night, it was three houses. They tried to neighbor right across the street, they ran onto her property, and she had a ring bell that took a picture and lit up, so they ran off of the property that was right across the street. So my car was locked and alarmed, and they got in. They didn't take it off the property, but they went in.
Did you see anyone with the door?
No alarm went off on both cars, and I'm never leaving my keys in the car, ever. I'm the safest human being in this room.
I'm not, um, I don't have any problems with alarms, I don't.
And so they got in with some type of their handheld electronic-
We don't know that, of course.
Well, they got in.
I, I understand that, I understand that.
Right. It looked like they were carrying a cellphone.
But, do me a favor, just, just, just look the light one more time.
They're brand new cars.
Just look the light one more time. I will say this, though.
Can we do it again?
The mirrors are out. Your mirrors fold in? What is locked?
No. No, wait, nope.
Okay, I was just wondering, because that's usually the telltale sign that we have, is the mirrors, the mirrors fold.
Locked, every night I don't go anywhere without locking those cars.
Um, okay, I can't see you, thank you. Okay, I don't, I'm not, I know about the fobs from, I've built cars in rentals, but-
What if her husband stole them outside and upstairs and decided to go outside toward the friend's property? Who's the three of them and the car? None of them would have gone to attack?
I don't know, because we didn't find them, but I'll tell you this right now, why not call us, that's what we do. That's what we do. I would not suggest going outside, um, I wouldn't, I don't think it's, I don't think it would be a good idea. Number of reasons. Number of reasons. Even if, even if, even if her husband was armed, okay, number of reasons. It's a property crime. It's a car, it's a property. I understand the thing, and I, and I get that. Let's say it does go bad. Let's say her husband is armed, and let's say he's completely legally justified. I don't know her husband, she seems like a nice lady, and so I'm assuming her husband is a nice guy. It would be a shame for a nice person to have to get into that sort of confrontation and possibly end up in self-defense hurting someone, number one. Does that know what I'm saying? It's, that's a, that's a tough thing to deal with, and I'm not gonna wish that on someone. I know that. Okay? If you call 911, and there's three of them, that wouldn't be the smartest thing to do in the world.
Well, what if, an hour later, they noticed that the car was open and he went out to close his car doors and they were waiting, and they keyed it up?
I can't, I can't, I can't play with what ifs, but if I saw that, and me doing what I do for a living, I would, even if armed, I would back up into my house, because again, I don't want a confrontation over the, over, well, I guess I don't use money to tolls anymore, but over the toll money in my car.
I could offer a suggestion for people who have alarms in their homes. If you don't feel like you have time to call 911, you can set off your alarm. And that can scare people away from your property, usually. If your alarm's going off, why not call the police?
Well, if my alarm goes off in the house, we reset it, because like I said, if they're in the house, it'll go off again, you know? If you want your alarm to go off, yes.
Because when the alarm goes off, they know that we're on the way, and they have to get out of that conflict. General over there.
Yeah, I just wanna make a comment. Modern cars, they have like computer security. So the car's computer is constantly looking for a signal from the key fob. Normally, that range is probably 10 to 20 feet. But what happens is, I've been meeting a lot of people, you know, car thieves using signal receivers. And what that does is it basically boosts the signal between the key fob and the car's computer. So even if you have a key fob inside the house, perhaps right behind the front door or close by the window, they'll use that device to boost the, you know, key fob signal, and then they can basically walk up to the car as they have seen it on.
I'm not, again, I'm not an electronic, I assume they need, they need to encrypt that specific file. Because I know, like, back in the day, GM had only 20 different key styles, so if you walked up, you know, wanted 5% chance of you'd get, you'd already get a GM. I'm not, I'm not a fan of these files. There've been people that died because they, they didn't realize that, because the car's so quiet now, they left it on the house, in the garage, shut the door, and then they woke up dead in the morning because of a carbon monoxide. I'm not a huge fan of fobs myself. I know that's the way, the way it goes, but I-
But when anybody was concerned, Amazon, they sell these, what they call fire bay, the bags and pouches. You could key fob in there and block all the radios and everything, and basically-
Well, also, most of these, because like- They're almost a kid's age. They're almost a kid's, and when I say kids, I mean early 20s teens. A lot of them, a lot of them are younger than that too, because in New York, 17, you're not, you're a kid. Most of these are kids. They're not all the sharpest tacks in the, tacks in the box. You know, which, which is, which is good for us, because a lot of us aren't. But they're, they're, they're all a promise of opportunity. If they had that, there wouldn't have been only three, three, there would have been, we would have had quite a few more. It's, um, it's, but I don't know, I don't know if the fobs might reach too out from the, I don't know. But I don't know how far they, they can reach, or they can't reach.
So what is the police department doing? Do you have extra people on the streets? Because it's not just the three incidences that we, that I'm here for, because I know many others going back over the past year and a half. In surrounding area, my cousin's house was broken into, a long-on dog in the house, they were all at a wake, and lights were on, they didn't know the cars were still in the driveway, and they'd broken through the back, and they knew exactly where they were going, knew exactly what they were doing. We belong to North Hills Country Club, cars have been stolen off of the property just this past weekend, and I think the sixth precinct, and I think that's Fresh Meadows, Deepdale, and all the people have been coming onto the property, up at the Americana, so there's been an increase in activity.
I'll tell you this right now, if I gave a valet my key, and I went back and my key was gone, and my car was gone, when I say I'd be going after them, I'm gonna be physically going, well, I might. Especially if you're trying to- I'd be going after them.
The valet at, at North Hills is, I mean, he's been there for 20 years, he turned his back, they took the key off his, his thing, and they took the legging. But they came on the property this past week, raising, checking cars, and-
We should keep this to trial.
Right. And it wasn't the valet, these are people that are coming onto private property.
And again, you, you need the calls. Even my guy driving down the street there, I can see them. We need, we need the calls. People also need to, people, look, a person's on my, on your property, we get them all the time, Green, we're having a problem, we squash that. People call, hey, someone trying door handles. We go, we find the guy, and we grab him. And we have to- The valet's not as bad as these two, where I have a lot of them that will be hardened if they got, they get locked, that lock boxes now. Something like that is as simple as a lockbox.
Inspector Vitelli, don't you have focused patrols at some point?
Yes, we do.
Can you explain to everybody about that?
We, um, depending on what's going on, right now, particular posts I'm in, it's, I'm trying to say where all the people come. And what we'll do is we concentrate in areas where there are certain things going on. Right now, we've got a couple of extra people by the Americana, they wouldn't see them. When this happened in Flower Hills, every night, we send cars, three cars, if we have extra, okay, so we're on the roll, four, five cars, to certain neighborhoods. It's kind of like playing whack-a-mole, and you, well, you hope they're there when they're there. And you, well, you hope they're there when they're there, when, when you're there. But again, it's like officially, you go back, you go back to the same hole. You catch something, you can go back, and hope they can grab you, and they do go back. And as, if there's something going on in the Great Neck area, we put our resources there. There was something happening here, we put our resources here. The Americana, the DinnerCon, we put cars there looking for the fools who believe they're fool. I don't wanna blame the victim. Looking for the people who are careless enough to leave their fobs in the cars. During shopping hours in the Greenville area, we have, we have extra cars there. We call them directed patrol officers. And we do that several times a shift, depending what they need. It's enough, or we'll just assign a car to intensive patrol that area several times before, and they'll give us a quick report. We generally don't use unlocked cars too much, a number of reasons. One, if somebody else comes over and needs to get somewhere, now it's a problem. Number two, if you're getting pulled over by a car and it's unmarked and it's just lights on it, you're gonna be a little nervous? Thankfully so. I would be too. All right, and so we don't generally like to do, we don't like to generally do enforcement in unmarked cars. For that reason, there was a, an incident that happened in Georgia. Didn't notice a state trooper behind her, and she kept going, and turned back. Um, it's, it's all you have to, you have to worry about safety here, for, for everyone. The unmarked are generally used if we have a specific thing we know something's going on. Um, did you, did you have something, sir, or is this generally behind you? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. So.
I, I got into a habit. Um, not only do I have to keep a car in the driveway, and I make sure it's locked and the mirrors can fold in, but many of us have the Ring camera or some camera. I have one that's shining right on the car. And I keep my extra fob at my bedside. So that when my Ring camera goes off, I can hit the panic button, I can lock the car. There's a couple of things I can do with that fob. But it's not bad.
I'm just trying to lock the alarm. I don't have automatic transmission.
So I can find the basic part.
Yeah, I, I, I'm getting there too.
Well, since this incident exactly one month ago, I haven't seen one police patrol in all of Flower Hill ever. And I come and go twenty-four seven. I haven't seen one police car ever in the last month.
I, I didn't bring up, we, we actually check the GPS of the police officers to see what they're doing tonight. And, and during the day, make sure. I tell them I want to play the pack man game, just driving around the streets. And I review them, and they're out there. They're out there.
I hope so.
I hope so. It's like check that.
It's needed. It's not considered a high crime area, but it's needed. Because we are targeted. We're being targeted over here.
And they tend not to go down to ends, like I'm one of those waiting right here, which is, turn down there, there's no way out, it's a good, only that back. They live through the cops on the road.
I'm tired.
Can they do more patrols?
They're probably not.
We have that.
I don't see them. I'm sorry, I don't see them. I probably don't, I don't, I don't see them. I don't see much.
Yes, sir.
I live at the, I live at the end of Hemlock for many years. I never see any cars. We need more police. We need more police. We need more police. It's frightening. They were in her bedroom.
Yeah.
They were in her bedroom. They would come inside with her, they came back a second time. They came back an hour later.
Correct. My friends have asked if they were in her garage, and her son has a four-wheelers and motorcycles. While they were sleeping, they go right into her garage, and they spent a few hours driving, taking everything out, and packing away, and has it. And this is something I'm not happy with, please, so.
Sir?
So they do need more patrols.
So they try to addition, like the alarm, lock the door between our garage and our house, like always keep that locked. Is there anything else, like keep a radio on if you'd be here today? Like you lock the doors, leave the alarm, is there anything else? I mean, at that point, like, it doesn't sound like, I mean, since it was probably raised and broken, but there was no alarm, but.
The.
Kind of summarize.
It, it is, and that burglary was concern. It's a scare.
Oh, you're referring?
No, 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 no. I said it's a scare, it was concern, concern, it's a scare. Um. And I, I, I understand, but that's why, that's why I pulled the numbers. Going back three months. Of course, data much older than that is not as valid. Um, and in the three months' time, there was the one stolen car, I'm not counting the valet at the, at the restaurant. There was the one stolen car where the keys were left in it. The three autos, and the one burglary. And if you look at that, at those numbers, and, and it's not the most reassuring to say, the, the, the crime in Flower Hill is, unless, unless it happens to you, is negligible.
It hasn't arrived though. It hasn't arrived. It's now here. It was never here. They're here.
I don't think anybody is concerned that much about top priority of our cars. When you kill my car, I could kill us.
Mom?
I'm anxious that I'd be coming up to my property, invading my privacy. And my dog, yeah, I have the dog that was off, but that fear level that we have right now is getting bigger, less and less.
Yeah. This one's gonna get complaints. Um. The fear is valid, but not based in fact.
Doesn't matter.
But that, I'm sorry, but, 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 but you, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay. How, do we just believe?
I just have a question. Um, I thought that I heard, in fact, to be wrong, that one of the trustees, so Ms. Collins, after that happened to her, like, the next day or two days later, somebody down the block from her got broken into, and they didn't steal something. Was that true?
No, that, one was in the.
They entered the Lincoln Navigator.
That's, that's, that's not appropriate. That's not burglary.
No, I heard that they got in, and they took jewelry or something.
No, no.
Maybe it was just somebody talking.
If, if.
Because it was right after you.
If they did, if it happened, I'm not, I can't say it didn't happen, but if it did, they didn't tell us.
No, I'm sure they would.
I heard something happened on Greenbrier, but, um, I don't know if you have that report.
Um, I have literally, every, every single larceny, burglary, stolen car, criminal mistake that happened in the village of Flower Hill since April one. Um, it's one page. And it's not, I'll tell you, it's not a page, and some of these don't apply, because we classify things as Flower Hill, even though they're not the incorporated village. The industrial area, the Hank and Dennis, goes down on numbers as Flower Hill, even though it's not incorporated. Um, and John, and the three.
What's the, I've heard this happen a few times, but like, what's the recommendation if someone breaks your door? Like, do you just not answer the door for anyone unless you know the person? Like, is there like any recommendation?
I'm not, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not.
I mean, we're kind of on right now, like, unless we know the person, we do not answer the door for it. It could be kids selling candy bars, and we do not open the door.
Well, those kids selling candy bars are all scams, let me tell you right now.
No, but I'm just saying, like, is there a general recommendation about, like?
No, no, we, we, we don't make a recommendation on that.
What about the person that's been wandering around saying that they're, they have, they go, oh, I went to your neighbors', they recommended me on the termites, on this? I don't even, they caught me as I was pulling out of the driveway, but is that person legitimate? Not, I have no idea. I keep hearing that.
I look for a business card. If that was maybe someone to push me, I'd, I'd get a business card if it didn't have a number, if it's a number. Or I just, if that one person called, I don't want to sell something. No, thank you, I gotta work.
Well, that's what I did, but I wasn't sure if this person is really legitimate.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't know. I've got complaints about it. And I don't know what the rules for soliciting is.
So, so we have a no solicit policy. These people are breaking our no solicit policy, not that we're able to stop them. But I recommend you call the police. But a lot of these companies, I'll call them their real companies, but they have deceptive sales processes. They are selling legit exterminating services. However, they're lying about Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Jones. They pull names out of their hat. What they do is they will do extermination services for your house, but what they do is, when you're signing in on the iPad, it's not for once. They claim it's once. And then you're stuck in a very expensive one-year, um, contract. And you've already given them the credit card, and they claim it's only ten dollars. So they're providing services, they're just not honorable. Thank you, that's a good term. I just don't answer the door to these people.
Yeah, don't.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm just saying generally, like, I, I'm just taking your, your.
I, I, um, you got to be what, what, what you're comfortable, what you're comfortable with.
Yeah.
We, um, number of reasons, because we do say, yeah, answer the door if something happens. Don't say, yeah, don't answer the door, and it's, the one time a person does it, because we don't, we don't, we have to be, we're not comfortable. But talk to me with, I answer my door, but I'm also a little older, so I just.
Does the sixth precinct still utilize, uh, civilian police patrols?
Yes.
Have you seen any around here?
The civilians are mostly used on, um, special details and stuff. We use them for traffic control, uh, fireworks displays. Uh, sometimes, I mean, it all depends. There's only, there's only, there's not a huge number of them in the section. I don't know the number offhand, I'm sorry. It's not huge, but yeah, we saw it. They're, they're good people, so.
And one, and one of them's been driving around for forty years. You know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I know. Um, they're, they're good people. Yes, sir.
Is there anything, um, that you determine that makes a burglar go for a certain house? Because you have that sheet there from Waverford first. Is there any commonality that makes one house more attractive? Why do they take this particular house or this car? Is there something behind it?
There can't be any commonality, because there's, there's one. There's only one.
But as far as when they, they go for a house?
Generally, they want, a burglar generally wants no one there. No, they want anything, they want, they want to be as simple as possible. That's generally what it's about. They don't want a person in the house. The one that you said a year and a half ago, I didn't get the lady, about the lady, they probably saw the lady. They don't want someone in the house. They, um, they don't want, they don't want it to be difficult. They want the job to go simple.
Well, do they go for a richer-looking house as opposed to something else?
They'll go for what, what they deem to be easiest.
So my house is not the biggest, there's much bigger houses on my block. We don't have a Ring doorbell. There were no cars in the driveway. I have a short driveway and I'm four houses from Port Boulevard. Who knows? They had driven by, easy in, easy out, my side doors, nobody could see them. So they, it just ease of access. And how do you prevent it? You have an alarm that went off. They rang my front bell, nobody answered. They're in and out, and so basically, exactly what, what you just said.
Ain't wife or bedroom, book of jewelry.
Right. Nowhere else. They went to three bedrooms within seven minutes.
Might have lost them, let's just.
Twelve, no, twelve twenty-seven, the camera caught them. I got home at two thirty-four.
Um. Ma'am?
You could also ask your insurance company to check your absence if there's anything, if you've done an initial, make it safe. Because they, they checked mine, and she said it was very safe.
That is one thing, everyone might.
The team dropped in the back, it's an eight-foot rise and drop.
Like, a Ring doorbell, they're great. I love them. I use one too. But if, let's say you put in a Ring doorbell, whereas a pro's doing it might say, you know, this, 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 and this. Whereas if you're doing it yourself, you might not know this, 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 and this. Sometimes, you know, sometimes you get what you pay for. Um, so it's, there are people who do this professionally. And it's not the worst, yeah, they're gonna try and sell you something, but a couple of extra sensors don't cost that much. They say, put a sensor in your person's. Sir?
Hold on, Amazon, you can buy fake cameras for your house if you don't want to spend the money to get one.
They're so cheap now. What, what, what is it? I, I don't know, I don't know the price, but I know, I know, I see them, like, yeah, a couple hundred dollars, they give you four or five of them without.
They're less, yeah.
An IR, you know, all sorts of fancy things. But it's, it's just target hardening. Yes, sir.
I totally respect what you're saying. Thank you, sir. I think all of us are just willing to say, I would be willing to have higher taxes, to have more jobs, to be a veteran. It was also, was very important.
We're actually, I don't know if we're the tenth or the twelfth largest police department in the country.
But you're saying Nassau.
Nassau County. That's not including, that's not including the villages and the, um, the two city police departments that are in Nassau. The fourteen or fifteen villages and the one police district. Is that clear?
For years, and I have never been afraid, I am now becoming paranoid.
Crime is actually, crime's less now than it was before. It's, it's be.
I'm not telling you.
No, 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 everyone, everyone's afraid, um. Who else here, who else here, uh, uh, on a summer, on a summer morning, nine in the morning, mom says, be back for dinner? And off you go. Ten years old, eight years old, nine years old, and off you go. Right? That's what we all do, right? There were more disappeared kids and problems back then than there are now. The numbers are there. Is that?
Neighbors don't follow.
Well, it's, it's, there's also, but what happens is you hear about it now. Some, some poor kid in California or something, and, and even if it's, now I hear, it's, it seems like there's more, but there actually isn't. Sir?
It's the first one ever at all. It's just 911.
911. If you call the precinct.
If you see a suspicious person, you're gonna call them.
911, right? 911, every time. Um, if you call the precinct, they've got the exact same dispatch system, and they put it in. So 911, because, not to put down my office, they do everything. They do, that's all they do. They'll, that's the one, that goes, that's the best, 911, plus it's easier to remember. Who your nose of precinct phone number? I remember, when I was growing up, yeah, you called the station house. Hey, listen. But I remember when the village I was living in, we got 911. It was pretty cool. 911, because you remember it. I mean, if you, if you have to beat downtown, you know, when we cross over here, that, oh, suddenly a different precinct, you might not know that. 911. It all goes to the same place. It all goes in the same queue. It all has the same, 911 is the best way to go, always.
Delia, do you, do you want to address us at all?
Ma'am?
I'm not getting a good sense of how much crime there is in Flower Hill. I hear neighbors say they're more afraid than ever, and I hear you say it's negligible. So could you give me an idea?
Okay, um.
It is two questions. If it's more or less now, and could you make a comparison to Washington?
No, I can't.
To that's point, to Great Neck? So if I have some idea?
Great, okay, that's, great stuff, I'm inclined to leave to hear this. Um, I, I, I don't know the number in Port Washington. I can guarantee they're probably higher than that. Almost guaranteed. In, in three months' time, three months' time, one burglary. One burglary in three months' time. Four grand larcenies, which is an amount over a thousand dollars. Three of which were scams. People making a phone call, or possibly like a bank account. One of which was the dead, the poor gentleman left his wallet in Citibank, or his ATM card, Citibank, and it wasn't there. Okay, those, that, that, that was the limit of our grand larcenies. The car's, you know, three broke into, three in three months' time, only on one night.
So you're talking about Flower Hill, only Flower Hill?
Yeah, yeah, she, she's still going.
Three months doesn't seem like a good enough sample to me. Could you go to six months or a year?
The problem with that is the, the data gets old. I mean, work, work on the data we have. I can, I could, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make a bet, because I haven't looked at it. But I'm pretty darn sure crime was less then, because it was the winter time. Things always pick up more in the, in the warm weather. They, they always do. Um. I don't, I don't, I'm, don't, don't say, well, the inspector, I don't know for sure, because I don't have those numbers right.
So, let's have Delia Deriggi-Witten, who happens to be our Nassau County Legislature from the eleventh district. She's the person who, and you're on the safety committee.
I'm ranking on public safety.
So you're the perfect person, and thank you for coming.
Inspector, I want to thank you.
That's welcome.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yes.
What, what the inspector mentioned, which is really a good tool, is every police car does have. What, what the inspector mentioned, which is really a good tool, is every police car does have GPS in their trunk. And we can, actually, either the commissioner can just pull up an area, and the inspector does it regularly, from what I understand, and see where every car is for their entire tour, that you see where they are. And the one thing I ask is if you could just do that again, and really just make sure that, that our patrol officers are aware of the concern. Quality of life is so important, and you, you would live in a safe community, but you also have major roads right near you, which is one of the determining factors with people that want to get out, you know, quick, they can go right on the LA, you know, right on Northern Boulevard, even get into Queens very quickly, whereas if you live in Port Washington or Sanspoint, you can Glen Hope, it takes you longer to get out of that area. So, so on that, for that, I can definitely see why it's more of a concern. It's quicker for people to get out of Flowerhill than it is, you know, further north. And what, what you said, I totally respect that maybe it's not, maybe crime is not high. But when you hear these stories of these brave people, it really, it really is heart wrenching, and it, and I feel for you, and I'm sorry that that happened, because I can imagine what it's like to look out, and I have same cameras, and it's terrifying to think in your own driveway that this could be going on. But what I hear most often is if you see something, or if you feel something, or if something doesn't feel right, that's immediately when you call. Don't feel funny about calling. Don't ever hesitate to call. It's that gut feeling. We, we award police officers for exceptional work every month. It's always like, I just had a feeling, you know, I had a feeling this car, when I pulled them over, I had a feeling when I saw it. So follow your gut feeling, and don't ever hesitate to call. I totally respect the inspector of the sixth precinct. We had a lot of problems in Glenhead for a while. We had, um, turned out to be a neighborhood kid who was on drugs, who was breaking into the homes, but we eventually found them. And what I will do as your legislator, and total respect to the inspector, but I will also discuss it with the police commissioner, just mention that you have concerns, and I will ask for them to boost the, um, the, no. There are a few things that are going on that, um, you might see, and at first I thought they, it was terrible, I thought they were lost. But you're gonna see some police officers, they have like four cars that are controlling neighborhoods now. I was like, where, where are they going? You know, because it was almost, I've never seen four police cars at once. But it's a tactic, and they're starting to do this in different neighborhoods. And they're not even high cream, high crime neighborhoods, they're just basic, um, neighborhoods. It, 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 it makes these guys come aware that we're not fooling around. Um, there are some things that go on, you know, we do have some, some plate readers that are in different places. You know, we do have a few tools that some people might not be as aware of. But, um, but again, I think visibility of police is invaluable, and I will, I will talk to the commissioner. And again, it's no offense to the inspector, you're doing a wonderful job, but let's, let's boost it up a little bit. And anytime I've done that with the police commissioner, it's happened. So just don't get any tickets and complain to me. That might happen, but, um, but other than that, I, I really believe in that. And, you know, I just want to mention one other thing I want to give kudos to for that in Nassau County is, we had a real problem with the, um, with the converter, Cadillac converter being stolen. We had such a problem. They actually stole ones in my block, and I'm on the middle of, you know, it's a very hard neighborhood to get into. Um, but we really cracked down on people that were taking these, and we have a whole system now, and, um, you don't hear about it anymore. You know, so it's a great police department. We are, we are considered the safest county in the nation of our size. But I want you to have a quality life. I want you to be secure. I, I am the same way. I was a single mom for years, and I know what it's like to not, really, you worry more of your home if someone breaks in than if you're not helping even. But, um, you take it serious. I will talk to the commissioner and request further controls. Tony, my legislative aide is here. I, I haven't, I've been here a number of times, but I feel that I haven't visited for a while. But, um, yeah, we have these cars, if there's ever anything, call me or email me, and, um, we'll do it. But I will absolutely speak to the commissioner right here, and we'll do that. And, um, if there's anything you ever need, let me know, um. Do you know if we have a license reader on Port Boulevard, or is it?
We have, believe it or not, it was on, it was read by cameras twenty-four seven. And you have clear basis on it, because many of the cars have.
Right.
So if something happens and someone drives by, they, they do it done.
Right.
Where they can check them all, whatever. I have a saddlebag put in a few.
Right. They're, they're much more prevalent than you realize. So it's, God forbid, something does happen. A lot of times we do, we are able to skin a situation from that, but I'd rather prevent it from happening. So again, we'll do that. And, um, you know, I, there's a lot of issues, and it's true that everyone hears about things, and that you know things that might not have even happened, but, um, but I want you to feel safe. Be able to live in a beautiful community, pay a lot of taxes, and this is something that we can ask to do. But there are a number of other things, um, you know, we, we run a lot of NARCM training. Anybody, I always keep pushing this, or trying to get more of these. You know, to, um, NARCM, kids are really faced with a lot today. And a lot of this, a lot of times these guys are just trying to get enough money to buy drugs for a day. You know, if they find money in your car, I go, that will help. So we're really faced with a big opioid issue, um, so we're trying, trying to deal with a lot of, a lot of quality life issues at once. But, um, with that, I can definitely do, and I, um, for the inspector, thank you for, for everything. But I'll, I'll, I'll come behind him and kind of support him on my own with that.
Thank you, Inspector.
We've been trading me for cards, if you'd like to know, um, yeah, the cards.
Thank you again. I appreciate you coming in. All right, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing portion of our meeting.
You want here a second?
Second.
Trustee Smith, full favor.
Hi.
Okay, our first public hearing is regarding proposal for law I.
Let's just get it, let's just run. Let him clear out. Give him two seconds, yeah, give him two seconds. Alan, you're on door patrol. Close the door. No, seriously, Chris, hit the door for me. No. All right, all right, Ronnie, now, force back to you.
First, our first public hearing is proposal for law I, twenty twenty-three, allowing continuing violations to include daily. Presently, our code only allows the code enforcer to write tickets once a week for violation that continue, and this would increase the frequency.
So this is our second public hearing on this. The strategy was to allow our code enforcer to send multiple violations to people who are continually violating the law. As an example, there's someone who likes to park cars all over their lawn. We've had some issues with some dumpsters. They kind of feel that it's, it's part of doing business by only getting ticketed month, uh, weekly. So that, that's kind of why it was suggested for us to enact this local law. Do you have any questions from the board?
He's got the discretion on whether.
It's a hundred percent to his discretion. It's just, there, there are some, we've had some bad actors. And it's really, it's, it's not meant to do this on a regular basis. It's really meant to go after. If, if Max were sure, he could tell you a good story about somebody. But, um, it's really just meant to go after the few people who think. It's a close one.
It's more so that people don't just say, well, I'll just write a check once a week, right? They want to hammer them so that they stop doing the stuff.
If it's somebody who we've already spoken to, usually what happens when it comes to violations in the village, Jack tends to give everybody a warning first, with a reasonable amount of time to remedy the situation. And there are just some people who say, fine, just give me a ticket weekly, it's okay. And you figure after, if it becomes daily, we'll get some of these nuisances to go away a lot faster. Any questions from anyone in the audience? That being no.
That being no, um, so this is the first hearing for this, uh.
No, it's the second, so we can vote on this.
You know, as action was introduced at the last meeting, and this is the first hearing.
I don't have to ask you, it's no sign. But you know what? We don't have to hold it for a second of, that's just the policy. So let's vote on this now. But Jeff's gonna say something about secret first.
I, I would, I would say that if the board is going to take action on it, that this would indeed be a type-two action, I think those may fit it back down in the environment. So I would ask that if the board's taking any dozen actions, that the adopters.
Okay.
Okay, so we're seeking resolution enacting local law I, including a secret resolution. Uh, this is a type-two, uh, action, and do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Collins, by a show of hands, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody abstain or no? Okay, the votes carried. Next hearing is proposal for law J, to consider a stop sign on Chanticleer and Drake Lane.
I'd like hearing from Ms. Scott.
Hi, Dan. Thanks for having me back.
You're welcome. So for the record, since we're being recorded.
Sure, Eric Scott, ninety-five, Drake Lane. Um, so I was here last month, thank you for having me, um.
Thank you for coming back.
You're welcome. Um, so just for those of you who weren't here, to reiterate, there is, um, at the intersection of Chanticleer Drive and Drake Lane, it's a very, very wide intersection, and, um, there are a lot of issues. I walk by there and drive there, obviously, many times a day. Um, we have a plethora of very young children, which is fabulous. But they, they obviously use the streets on their bikes, um, and we have a lot of adult walkers. So coming, um, on the decline, the decline of Drake Lane going west, um, kids come down there, and the cars that are going north up on Chanticleer, um, usually do not slow down, and they swing around to the right. I am fearful as are many people, the kids that are coming down on their bicycles. Um, many people don't know what, for some reason, I don't know if they live in the town, or they don't, but they don't know what to do when they see this very large, uh, open space. So anyone who's going left onto Drake Lane for some unknown reason, rather than staying to the right, putting on their blinker, and then making a left, they all hug the left side, um, and basically almost hit anybody who is coming east on, um, Drake Lane. So I, on a daily basis, personally, go straight, cross Drake Lane going east, and almost every day, someone almost goes into my car. So, um, I did get forty-two signatures from around the neighborhood. By the way, everybody answered the door. I did it during the day, and I had hat on and sunglasses, um, and it was incredibly friendly. So that's just a side note, but it's a very friendly town, and, um, that, I don't know.
You don't look too threatened there, and.
You never, you never know, but I just, it was very, it was very nice. Everyone was very important. It was just to add on to what I have. So I just wanted to mention, I was walking with my husband a couple of weeks ago, and we were walking through Plandon. And as we're walking through, I've never noticed before, I walk there every single day, literally. I noticed that in all these large, um, wide open intersections, they have what I would call like a neighborhood traffic triangle. Um, so I took out my phone, and I started to take pictures so I could show you guys. And this gentleman came up to me, he's an older man, he's very friendly, and he's like, did you picture? So I said, yes, I live over here, blah, blah, blah. And he said, oh, I used to be on the board, um, for Plandon Village. And we put five of these in, all around our village. He said, they've been wonderful. Number one, it slows drivers down, and number two, it gives them a place to go, it gives them a direction. Um, so I did, um, take a couple pictures, I'll give them to you. I also sent them to the mayor.
We, we have a lot of islands already.
Oh, we do? Okay, so.
Oh, throughout the, Rich, how many islands do we have?
Oh, that's great, okay. Well, one of the things that he said, which I thought was really interesting, he was like, well, this one's too big, we should have made it smaller. But they use just the Belgium blocks, and he's like, rather than, he's like, we made a mistake, we put them going up. But if you put them going down, then if you happen, if somebody or like a landscaping, um, truck happens to go over it, they won't pop a tire. Um, some of them just have just green, nothing more, which is fine. Some people put little flowers in, I don't really care. It was just, I noticed it, so I don't know if this is better.
So it's, it's, it's something for us to consider.
Sure.
But the cost of doing them.
Here you go.
Is not insignificant.
Okay.
But that's why let's look at doing the stop sign now, and in the future, we can plan. And that, that intersection is wide enough that perhaps an island could.
So one of them that I took a picture of, they had a stop sign. And if you notice, it's a, it's an eye opening over there, because where would you put the stop sign? I think you just put it further back. So one of those pictures, they have the stop sign and the stop line further back on the road, and then the island, or whatever it's called, is further up. I don't know, it may give people more of a direction, like, oh, I'm gonna go right, I have to go this way, I'm gonna go left, I have to go right, and then I have to go around to go left. And then the people who are coming down, Chanticleer can just follow it. I don't know, maybe it's an injury.
So I, I, I think for the short term.
Yeah.
Let's focus on the stop sign. And, and we spoke about last month, I was talking to Richard, our supervisor, about painting like swales on the side to keep the traffic.
What's a swale?
Sorry, no.
It's their, they're control, 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 control stripes, they, you know.
You know how you, you know your corner is really wide? We're thinking of using paint to.
Yeah, they're called control, control stripes.
Because that will stop people from doing that diagonal turn.
I mean, whatever you feel is the right thing to do, I don't know how those people who live there are gonna feel about that stripes in front of their houses. You're gonna hear from them, I, it's not my job, so.
Well, it's better than seeing.
You're gonna be blamed for anything.
It's better than seeing an injured child.
Well, well, that's the issue. There's just a lot of children, there's a lot of walkers. Um, it's, I, I really fear that one day somebody is gonna get hurt, and I, you know, I don't, I don't want to see that happen.
No, it's a good point.
So for the, Ronnie, for the record, we have the signatures as exhibit A or part of the official record that Ms. Scott submitted last month?
I gave them to you, yep. You have it. I have a copy at home if you want, I didn't bring this.
How about you? How about you scan it and send it to Ronnie? I'd, I'd like that as part of the record.
Yeah, it'd actually be better, right?
So I think Claire had a question.
Not a question to comment. I was not at the meeting last month, I apologize, I was traveling. But I will say that Eric has been a total advocate for this. I have three of those children that are on the corner, apologies, but thank you for that also. Totally support, so I just wanted to go on the record and say that, thank you.
Maybe if you slow your kids down.
Can you go scare them? Because they don't like it.
It's a really fun ride.
I did, I took a ride down there, and the stop sign thing, I really think that we have to put the, the plant there in the middle, because that road, first of all, if you're gonna put a stop sign there, it kind of hooks at the bottom. So if you bury the stop sign at, at the, at the corner there, you're not even really gonna see it, as far as I'm concerned.
You almost have to come, because, because it's so wide and angled, you're gonna have to bring, which is fine. You're gonna have to bring the stop sign in, I think, a little bit more, which means that people have to stop and then go up.
Because it really does, it like hooks at the bottom, too, and there's like bushes or shrubbery over there. It's kind of thing that you're not gonna see it until you're on top of it. But my point is.
Are you talking at the top of Chanticleer?
No, I'm talking about right where it hits the intersection.
Going up.
Going up, well, going down, I guess, isn't it?
Well, going down, there's a stop sign at Stony Town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm talking about going the other direction.
Yeah.
There is a stop sign that you have to have signs at the bottom.
The thing is, we have, I live on Mason Drive, like, in the corner of Mason and Mason, we have one of those things, and it does force people.
Yeah.
To go to the right.
And also by doing that, it slows, I mean, I noticed that it really does slow people down, because you, you have to go around.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we, I think, I think we have to be careful though, because Mason is naturally not a good. It's similar, it goes uphill. People are accelerating going uphill. So if you're actually walking on that road, it, it, you put your life at risk, I walked many times from the train station. There, so, um, I think we need to be careful about, what, what the, the problem with that design is that it's so wide and swoopy, that it allows people to, to take that curb out of speed that we, we would never recognize as a good speed, but the kids are walking around on, on the street. So, uh, how we slow them down, well, yeah, I guess a stop sign. Where is a stop sign? But probably, because it's so wide, you need a stop line.
Oh, I definitely think it's not quality motion to be very, I don't know, because it'll, it'll be.
Right, and, I mean, eventually, yes, is there some better road design we can talk about? But, uh, and maybe that's something when, when we consider road repaired work, that, you know, we, 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 we look at what the safety conditions are of the roadway when we do the roadway repairs.
You need to want, though, because people are taking a right or a left, right? There's a danger on both sides. Whereas if there's the island, wouldn't that automatically force you to the right? Whereas if there's the island, wouldn't that automatically force you to the right?
It, it.
Maybe you should go to the right, but you're gonna go like past my house.
Yeah.
You can go to the right and then you may go left.
The traffic engineer is big about that.
Right. So, so for the exercise here, we're gonna focus on doing stops.
Yeah.
We, we've already set our road budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. So.
No, what I'm suggesting, when, when, when Chanticleer is up for repaving, that's when we should think about.
Guess what? It might, it might happen sooner than that because Chanticleer is in such good shape. It might be on the schedule for years.
Well, Drake, Drake is to be done, yeah.
Right. So we, we kind of have a long way to go. So let's focus on the stop sign. I think it's, in, in other paintings, as Rich figures out, that makes sense, that will help us out. Does the board have any other, we're not gonna vote tonight because it's our first public hearing. But does the board have any other questions? Does anyone, I was gonna say, does anyone from the public?
Should I sit down or do I?
You can sit. You can stand. You can sit.
You can have your pictures back.
Right, and thank you.
We're gonna put a pickleball court right on this spot.
That's my next thing. John Marino, eighty-six Drake Lane. So I, I live right across the street from the stop sign. I've lived in that house for thirty years. And you are right, that is a dangerous intersection. I try to make a move, you're right. But I know that many people don't do that. Stop sign not a good idea. You're talking about doing it at the top of Chanticleer on the right?
I mean, that was my guess.
That probably makes the most sense.
Okay, the, the road takes a big curve. A lot of people are not gonna see that stop sign unless you make a big one.
We have paint.
Because the stop signs, if you can be hit. Also, that top sign, that stop sign is gonna be at the top of a steep hill. People accelerate up that hill to get, to get up the hill. I don't wanna see anyone getting bashed behind. That's happened to me many times in Hasselwood Road or the guarding trucks. You can't see that way. I, I thought I was here last year about that. Early is probably three times a week, there's always large landscaping trucks stopped, parked right at the, right at the.
It parks.
We would have to, right, because then you're not even gonna see the stop sign. Then it gets really dangerous. So I have to put in no, no standing sign there.
Well, they won't be able to, if I can interject, there is a landscaping truck that does park. They park a couple of their trucks on that right-hand turn, which is also, you can't see around them. Correct. You can't see anybody coming down the hill. So if there's a stop sign, they won't be able to park. They'll have to park near the borders of the stop sign or around the corner.
I guess there's no way.
Yeah, the problem with it is, I noticed this, is that people don't understand that you're not supposed to park near a stop sign.
Right.
They park near a stop sign all the time.
Well, so there's no.
So we need to be, I think that's a good point. We, that there are blind spots created here.
Also, there's no double line coming up that way. That might help. Like a double, double line. Most people don't know what that is anymore because you're not supposed to cross a double line, you know, up that street. So when you come up the street, you know, you gotta pass that double line to make the last work.
Right.
Keep people out of the way.
So all these are good ideas. I think a double line may also be good. I don't want neighbors to get upset and think that like now is a traffic area with double lines. That's why I thought the triangle seemed like a lovely sort of welcoming.
First of all, we'll just go up here at the corner.
Yeah, they want.
Well, but listen, whatever you guys wanna do or your engineer thinks is appropriate. I just wanted to, I think it's dangerous corner and I wanted to bring that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, anybody else have any questions? That being said, no, I will make a motion to adjourn this to the August, is it seventh or tenth board meeting?
Seventh.
August seventh board meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, August seventh it will be.
Okay.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you. We got continued public hearing, continued landmark dedication here in the Elder Fields Preserve. And I see you can have the bounty here.
What did you do to Mrs. Gershon? Where did she go? I, I, I heard she left. Has she left the county? Is it because she didn't like the Elder Fields Preserve? Did we force her out?
Thank you, Mayor. Kevin Walsh, York City State Services. Thank you for.
I'm sorry, I was talking over you. We're being recorded by the senator for Kevin.
Yes, Kevin Walsh, York City State Services in Nassau County. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the board. And thank you to the Landmarks Commission for having us. And we've attended several meetings and discussed this property. So just a little summary, I don't know, Anna probably shared a lot of this last time. A lot of things I learned. In addition to, this property is actually in size, it's about three and a half acres. The building site's about two point seven five. So what we've been working with is with the village attorney cooperatively with the landmarks trying to come up with some restrictions to put on to, to continue the historic character of the property. The deed to the county requires it to be historic home and a preserve, which is within the use. I think most people know that for some time, a small cottage, some small sheds onto the property and so forth. So I understand from the last meeting, a, a survey was requested. Unfortunately, we didn't locate a survey. But I did bring a pretty decent aerial map, which has good pictures, and the current tax maps. There's actually four tax lots. Just to the north of the main site, as you see it on, on Port Boulevard, you see the vacant water area. That's about three quarters of a acre. That's included in the deed. The restrictions of the deed cover that property as well. So if there's, what questions about this? I understand Anna answered quite a few questions.
This was actually held open for the submission of our survey. What I suggest is that I, I briefly set a document before we call the county branch. This could be taken in tonight. And then if the board otherwise wish to, to close the hearing subject to review by the building inspector to compare it against the file and then put the matter over for deliberation and decision.
I think that makes the most sense unless anyone here has any other questions. But I think the, well, last month we were waiting for that document.
And the only thing I would, I would also ask, Mr. Mayor, in speaking with Mr. Walsh, indicated that the county may in fact, although they haven't found it yet, who believes they may in fact have an actual survey. I would suggest that if they do find that and they're able to mark that up, that that could then be substituted for what was submitted.
It's possible. It's not true. We acquired it on ninety-six from the Williams family. It was like, you know, through the states. It's possible. There's some maps. I, I have somebody in our office who's great at locating a lot of things out of the old park lot. So of course, if I can find it, I will share it with you.
Right, because that was what, we initially requested a survey. The cost to do a new survey was very expensive and we're kiyatens of taxpayer dollars. So we figured if you had something that could be marked up, that would be preferred over what you have there.
Right.
But if that meets our village attorney's requirements, we'll go with that.
The good news is, which I think will help with the, these are whole lots. A lot of times I run in trouble in accounting. So you have portions of tax lots. Then it's tricky to really do these things. The good news here, these are whole tax lots.
So Mr. Mayor, as I'll accept, happy with the, for the record of the village and then review.
Okay, perfect.
So then is there a motion at this time to close subject to review that the building inspector had motioned to confirm that the submission is in accord with what was requested by the board and for deliberation and decision?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, by show of hands, all in favor?
Aye.
And a question, are we making it a survey requirement or not a requirement? Not a requirement. If they have signed a survey that, if, that my, was that if you and I can review this, if it seems sufficient for those purposes, we'll advise the board accordingly. But if the county does sign the survey and is able to mark it up, I would suggest that could be substituted for this. I would just also ask for you. Our next meeting of the board is August seventh. Will it matter on the calendar on that date, Mr. Mayor?
I believe it should be. I'd like to get this done already.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all.
Thank you. Now, don't quit on us next.
Okay, just wanted to clear something up with Mr. Blanco. So the motion is.
Yes.
You were asking like, I was just recently.
Yes.
Just recently, I was here.
Is a continuation of landmark designation nation hearing for seven National Road. I know, so this is the one in the audience.
I don't think there's much left.
Ronnie, do we need?
Stephanie Jalen, Seven National Road. I don't think there's much left to say at this point. I think we've said everything. I'm assuming you got our letter. Are you ready to read our letter?
We, we have that summary, yes.
Board has, or received copies.
Okay, it's all there. We stated our case last time. Obviously, this has been a frustrating, stressful process for us. And we were hoping that, it was not landmarked, but at this point, it's in our hands. So that's all I have to say. There's nothing really left to say. Everything we wanted to say is in the set or in the letter.
And I assume you want to let her prepare the record.
Sure, thank you.
Any trustees have any additional questions that were answered last month? Anybody in the public have any comments on this matter? That being no, I'm going to, I'll let Jeff, Jeff make the motion for me.
Up to the board, as with the other one. There's been a lot said. The board wishes to consider it and matter be. If you have nothing else to submit, that the matter could be kind of closed for the hearing purposes and throw over for deliberation and decision after the same meeting.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
But I just wanna be sure, August seventh is the next meeting available or the way?
Well, is already this, this needs to come back for a little bit. I'm sorry, we already.
You don't have to come back. I was, the board deliberates.
So we're not voting on this tonight? This, I thought we were coming back for the, to finish this. This is not being finished now? I just don't know what works. I thought that they were gonna talk about it. We sent our letter and that's, they would be voting on it today.
Then up to the board.
It's up to, I mean, if you wanna, if you want more time to, if you want more time to speak about it, that's fine.
I mean, if we're gonna, we're closing the public hearing.
Yeah.
So you don't have to come back next month because we're not going to reopen the public hearing. We're going to decide between now and then. And then have our, and have a written decision as to what we're going to.
A lot of us still have, we have to discuss this.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I'm Russell Bailey. I live there as well. We sent a letter with the same concerns that we looked at the last, the last meeting. Yeah, I was just saying, if there's continuation of any of those various topics that should be, that the board has concerns about, which I would think they might, then I would love to continue that conversation.
Do you have any questions for us?
Yeah.
We're having to answer them.
Obviously, some unresolved things there, so I don't know how they get resolved or if the board asks questions and tries to figure these things out in the best way possible.
Any questions for us about what we wrote or did you, you didn't get a chance to read it yet? Not saying if that was your, I don't know how the process works. If that was your fan from between now and next time, I don't know. But if there's any questions now.
My understanding as a trustee is we, well, you laid your case out and we've heard multiple months. You know, we will discuss it. I have questions, we, we will fully vet it because this is important to you and we're going to treat it. We don't wanna just rush into a decision today. And if we have any unresolved questions, then we know we can come back to you. Or I think that's how we're proceeding.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, no, thanks. That's all. Thank you.
I just wanted to, is August seventh available to you? Sometimes people go away.
Sorry. Except that we lost our childcare tonight, so let me just. Probably, probably, yeah.
One of us.
Thank you.
Ready, thank you.
So then is there a motion to, to.
Yes.
To reserve deliberation and decision about your set.
I will make that motion.
Give a second.
I will second.
By show of hands, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
What, what, in two seconds? We're getting there. Hold on. Did we all vote in favor to close the, did we all vote to close the public hearing?
Yes, we did. It is closed.
All right, I'm gonna open up to public comment as long as there's no discussions on pickleball courts. Come on.
John Marino.
Come on, John Marino.
I wanna revisit the ball in Flower Hill Park. I was fortunate enough to meet Senator Jack Martin at the graduation ceremony two weeks ago. And I told him there were many people in Flower Hill who were interested in pickleball, possibly in Flower Hill Park. And you may remember that Senator Martin was very instrumental in obtaining money for his financial.
Yes, he did.
To get that vertical sports hall built in Flower Hill Park. So he said, oh, that sounds really very nice, you know? Pickleball's such a great sport, great for the community, great for families. You know, maybe I can, and I told him to the board team interested with finances or issue. He said, well, possibly I could get you some grant money from the state for that. So I said, oh, that would be fantastic. And I said I was going to present it to you guys and that if you guys or gals in the board are still interested. I told him I had presented a plan as to maybe where it would be located. And he said he'd be going and happy to speak to anyone about maybe obtaining some grant money for that.
Nice. Well, I will take it upon myself to talk to Jack. I just saw him last week at dinner, but that didn't. When did you speak to him?
I saw him at the discarded graduation. I was on board there. It was about two and a half weeks ago.
Oh, I just saw, he didn't mention to me.
Yeah, we did.
We just saw him last week.
Yeah, we had dinner with him last week.
Sent him a follow-up email.
So I, I will, I will make it a point to talk to Jack and I will see what he can possibly free up in grant money and what makes sense for the village. Just so you know though. If we were to build this lovely pickleball court.
Yes.
By the, the, the deed of when we took the park over from the county, we cannot make that a Flower Hill only court or park. So if we were to build this lovely pickleball court, I think people would come from far and wide to play there. And I think you would find it very challenging to get court time. I'm just letting, just letting you know because I think it's a great, I'll, I'll be there half the time myself. But I just think people will come from far and wide to play at that pickleball court because there aren't that many public ones around.
Yeah, Dan, they have, they've got nice ones.
Right now, they talked about. Dan, have you just opened fourteen courts?
Right.
I just played Christopher Wohl this morning, two courts. So starting to, you know, and we are in a good install here. So, you know, that might be a good thing.
So you, you're a physician.
Yes.
Do you know that pickleball is now the leading cause of orthopedic injuries for sixty and over?
Three hundred and seventy-seven million dollars of insurance of people who are usually over sixty, especially children tendents.
Because people who are seventy-five years old say, I think I'm gonna start playing pickleball and it's like.
So my question is, do you really wanna have a pickleball court or are you just trying to make money off all the injuries?
A lot of orthopeds.
We, but I'll talk to Jack in the near future and see, and see where it goes. Listen, if, if it makes sense and we could afford to do it, why not?
It would be great. I think that would be such fun.
Yeah, okay. Or we can build it at Chanticleer and Drake. It's right by, it's right by your house.
A lot of lines would be great.
It'll serve Drake.
I just wanna point out as, as someone who defends tort cases, we should make sure the insurance in the park will cover a facility like that.
We, we would ask, of course. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're pretty covered for the park.
The other, you know, the other option is if you're not, if it's not gonna work out for whatever reason, we reconsider providing the basketball court, the basketball.
No, no. We have so many people playing basketball.
You'd have, you'd have a riot.
I don't wanna see the basketball people fighting the pickleball people. It's gonna get ugly.
The kids, they're sleeping.
I see, I see, I see a brawl breaking out, but, but thank you for the suggestion.
Thank you for your.
Thank you, it's always good seeing you. Any other questions from the public? Please, you can stand, you don't even have to come up if you don't want to.
Uh, my name is Robert Scalz, I have two pike, one dog, with Lane.
Could you spell your last name, please?
I'm sorry?
Spell your last name.
S C A L Z, like in Zebra, A.
Thank you.
I didn't really come prepared to talk about this, but it's an issue that's been bothering me here for over 40 years. Do we have any control over the timing of the traffic lights?
Which ones?
Coming down Mineola, ending at Old National.
It's a, it's a hot, that light is ridiculous.
So the.
So it's early in the afternoon, I'm coming home from work, the cars, and that's it.
So Ronnie and I discussed it a couple days ago.
That light is terrible, it's ridiculous, I don't even take, I don't even take Mineola anymore, because you could sit there for 10 minutes, and then it turns green for 30
The light on Northern.
Two seconds.
The light on Northern, I believe, is a state light, and the one on Old Northern is county. And Ronnie and I just spoke about it like five days ago, so Ronnie was going to try to figure out who she could reach out to, because I, I drive by that light five times.
Thank you for bringing that up, because it aggravates me.
It aggravates everybody, it's just.
It's ridiculous.
No, I wish, and I wish we grabbed, I wish Delia didn't escape, because she could have been a good, uh.
Send her an email.
I will, I know we will.
Quick question.
Sure.
Did you lose the war on the 5G situation?
No, we won.
We won.
We won.
We won. Don't you sign up for the, don't, don't we have your email address? Because in the mayor's newsletter, we've mentioned the victory multiple times.
I didn't get that, but.
One of, one of the few, one of the, one of the few, one of the few challenges that won.
And, and that's, and because the prior mayor said, we'll never win that.
It, it was very difficult to win, and we were fortunate that our council was able to make sufficient arguments for us to win. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Scalz.
And last, but not least, yes, ma'am?
Good evening, everyone, my name is Lenny Papasimakis, 24 Woodland Road.
Papasimakis?
Papasimakis, yes.
I think that's very great.
K P A S I M A K I S.
And the address is?
P A P A S I M T A S.
S I, wait, can I? I can look it up here. P A P A S I M A K I S. Address, 24 Woodland Road.
Thank you.
So this is my very first meeting, I'm very excited to listen in in office.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you, we just recently moved to the area, so I guess there's a process in doing everything, so I'm here to get some more information, or just to voice my concern about the speeding on Woodland Road, specifically between Ridge Drive East and Estee Cutler to Port Washington, that little specific.
You're not the person I've been emailing.
I have almost sent an email many times.
No, so wait, there's someone else on Woodland who lives up the hill, who's new, and she's been emailing me as well, and I'd have to look up her name.
Woodland is bad, I live on Cher, I live on the corner of Woodland and Cherry, so with the three-stop signs that.
But nobody stops there.
That nobody stops there.
Nobody stops safely, nobody stops.
Yeah, it, Woodland is bad down the hill, people go fast.
People come barreling down, there were a few instances, and I have emailed a few times, I've scripted in the office, I'll get to a meeting with the kids, I have two of them at home, it's really hard to see, my first time here, um, I've been walking out in the street with the kids, or even just by myself, and there'd be people speeding up to pass us, or to pass, there'll be like those slowly landscaping cars, and they speed up to pass us, and I feel the wind, just like, it's, it's pretty scary, and like, by the time you pull out, I call the office, they suggested them taking a picture, by the time you pull out, it's hard to take a picture of them, you're trying to like, okay, what's going on? So I did notice the speeding sign, the speed limit that was recently put into place.
Yeah, we lowered it to 25, yeah.
Yeah, I noticed that at the beginning, like, when you enter the town, but there's, I, I just, you know, that's a scary, that's a scary little stretch over there.
So I've been speaking to Rory Feinstein, or Fass, I'm not sure what her last name or maiden name is.
Oh, okay.
She lives up the hill from you, from, she's north of, uh.
On the right-hand side.
She's north of, of Ridge, yeah. So, so, we would be very interested in installing a speed table by your home, or any home on Woodland, however, depending on the placement of it, I would, we, we kind of require the permission of the homeowners that it will affect.
Put a gym there.
So, no, he won't put it there. So, you obviously sound like you're interested in one.
Yeah, I was visually looking.
I, I would, I would say that you would need, and again, I have to, we have Rich, and I have to look at your house and figure where it's gonna go, at a minimum, I would need the permission of the person across the street from you.
That's right.
And if, depending on where the speed bump would be, if it would be, like, affecting four homes, then we would need the four adjacent owners.
Oh, a speed dump, is that what you said, or a speed dump?
I call them speed tables.
Oh, speed tables.
Oh, I think you missed, I, I think you heard about the speed limit, the electronic, speed limit sign.
So we could put up, we have a speed radar sign sitting around to redeploy, we could easily redeploy that within a day or two.
Yeah.
That's one thing we can do very simply, but, but if you're looking, but if you're looking for a speed table, and that really does slow people down, it's a, go on Ridge Drive between where Joyance Pizza is and Center Drive, and there's one there that we've had up now for two years, or three years? Been up there for two years now, we take it down during snowtime, but it's been there, and it's been highly effective, because the person who was complaining about all the speeding there doesn't complain to us anymore about it, it's right in front of his house.
By Joyance Pizza, that's, that's what that tree is?
No, the other side of Woodland.
Just go from your house, just make a, make a, go up the hill, make a right onto Ridge Drive, and just go straight down, all the way down, you'll see.
Make believe you're going to Dunkin' Donuts to get some coffee, and then you will see the speed hump there. So we, we'd be glad to install one if we had the permission of, if we had the permission of the affected homeowners. A friend of mine lives on Woodland, he is very close to you, he considered putting one in, and then he realized that, we were sitting there talking for 45 minutes, and he realized that the amount of noise that it would generate, and that's mostly from the landscaping trucks with all the ladders and hose and equipment, and the FedEx guy and all the other trucks, he reconsidered after 45 minutes of us having a nice chat, he's like, you know what, it's gonna be too noisy. So that would have been a perfect place. If that's something you want to entertain, we would be very happy to install one there.
Oh, I have to say this, because I'm visually permanent, or.
So go, go to, go to that, go there, see what it looks like, if it's something you can live with, and we'll take it from there.
Now, what about the other, the visual, like the speed?
We can, we can put the speed radar up, do you want it?
Put it right in front of your ass if you want.
Well, it's easier to put it up, but it's easier to put it on someone's house who wants it than someone else's house.
Okay.
Do you want, do you want it?
It's, it's, it doesn't bother, it's not.
We could take it down after a month or two.
It's just a pole with a, a little speed thing, it shows you what your speed.
It's solar powered.
I'm for it, I don't see anything against it, I'm the neighbors would be against it, I don't know if you want me to go around and ask for it.
No, 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 if, if you are, if you're okay with it being on your lawn, Rich, can we pop it right up?
Yeah, it's a good size, just so you know.
Okay.
I mean, I could show it to you, it's, the, the solar power of the park is like, five, six, five feet.
We call it hydrant in front of that house, though, so I don't know how that would work.
I figured, Richie figured.
And there's two trees in front, and there's a hydrant.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
Figure it out, we'll, we'll work with you on placement.
I'm sure he's cool with it.
Have you met your neighbors?
Yes, yes, we have.
Okay, so I, I think, may have, maybe you haven't had a chance to talk to them about this particular subject, just wondering if your neighbors share your concerns as well? I mean, obviously, there seems to be at least some history here, but it would be good to have others kind of join in.
Okay, I'd definitely talk to them and just.
Because then the more people you have, sort of, what can we do to fix it?
Yeah, it would be that new, like, mom coming in.
Nah, you all pay, trust me. And, and unfortunately, that's, that's one of the places in the village that is like a cut through, so people cut through to get to Port Washington Boulevard, so they come down Ridge, Woodland, Cherrywood, and it's horrible.
They all, they speed up, and you do hear them speeding up.
Oh, no, I, I walk my dog by that house all the time, and I drive that way to get home every day, so I, I know the speed real well. Historically, the problem with our speed hump program is we've never been able to get consensus from two people to put it in a place, that's why we only have one deployed. I had another one on Ridge Drive closer to the center, they said they were interested, they were gonna get all the neighbors to sign, we still are waiting three weeks later. So we, we have the equipment, we have one sitting ready to be deployed, we just need the consensus, because we don't want to spend a full day to install it, mess up the street, and then few, two weeks later say, I changed my mind, because that just doesn't work.
Okay, so then I will be there at the next meeting, and I can.
You don't even need to come to the next meeting, here's my card. You could come anytime you want, but if you don't want to wait four weeks, you can talk to Ronnie, you can email me, and we'll, we'll figure it out.
Do I have your email for the newsletter? I don't think so. Okay, I need it.
Just email, just, just email to Ronnie, we'll put you on our list.
Clark at Village Board, help out.
She gave me the.
Yeah, you have my card, thank you so much, thank you.
No, but yeah, and let, and let us know, we could easily put the speed radar sign up within days, that's an easy one.
I always talk to my husband to stay sure he doesn't think I'm like a creature. What did you do? Yeah, I'm always like the one yelling after the cars to slow down, like one of those moms, but it's fast.
Rich, the one that you're, that we have downstairs, is that the same size as the one that's on Bonnie Heights?
No, this one's bigger.
Do we have one that's that size?
That's the last one I had.
I'm just curious, just so she could see one of them.
The only one I have is the one, tomorrow morning, the one, I can just show you what it looks like, I have it.
How about this, how about you guys go downstairs now, and you can show her, and then, so she doesn't have to make a second trip back?
Yeah.
If you don't mind going and talking to us. No, thank you for coming in. All right, end of public comment, unless Mitchell Schloss wants to say something?
Yeah, no, let's kind of.
Peter, you're not the public.
I didn't anticipate that you'd be swan.
Oh, you want to, you want to switch your stuff up?
I guess my, my wife and grandchild are at.
The swim meet, all right.
And then the last one's there.
Change of orders, let's go to the building superintendent's report. Thank you, Peter, I'm sorry, you're right, I forgot about the swim meet.
Make it quick.
Architects are due, so, uh, here are the items, uh, taking ruin of our D E requested surgery, they have to harm as they came back with the, an altered color, uh, which is approved in two locations, and we made a suggestion to stay with the black panel on the side entries by the door. Then new applications, 96, 10 locks, additions and alterations, uh, we had some specific comments, uh, that we gave to the architect, and if they comply with those comments, uh, we're asking for approval from the board tonight. Then we have 55 Wood Hill Links, here are next year alterations, uh, quite a number of changes we suggested to them, and we asked them to come back, uh, for the next, the next meeting on that one, so those are set for this, the meeting is June 26th.
Any questions?
I have no questions.
Uh, anybody, uh, would like to offer a motion approving the findings of the, um.
Get out of here.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, both favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Go.
Except for Gary, who's abstaining.
Um, as always.
Thank you, Peter, enjoy the swim meet.
The swim meet's all, I think.
Um, back to, uh, two of the minutes for, for the 25th meeting. I do, and they do need a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Um, the claims, the, except the claims.
So, um, here's a question on Stanley Spielman, and it's so good to have Suzanne here.
Why is it 1500?
Because he had, because he had, makes a lot of money, has a higher income, so he, Medicare is based on your income, because he, you know, pays more, therefore we have to reimburse him more.
So we, oh, so that's good, so we're just giving money to a rich person to cover that, so that explains it.
But that unfortunately is the terms of his employment slash retirement from this.
Of his wife's employment slash.
Sorry.
Yeah, he didn't work for them, did he?
No, sorry. Yes, that is why I'm always keeping an eye on these things for future.
Yeah, because he had a lot, but it's, it's still money.
300, 500, 500.
That is my mistake, that was our change. Just because we miss it, we miss it.
Yeah, right, yeah. Just wanted to make sure you sold that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's 40, almost 4,600 dollars.
Any other questions?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
All right, we'll wait for Rich to get back for the engineer's report, let's do administrator's report.
Okay, uh, let's see, we're very, we're getting ministry, we're working with Laserfish, everything is wonderful, um, I got an application for a filming permit, um, for this Friday, uh, at Edwin Diaz's house on Farm Q.
Timeout. They went and got all the sign-offs of all the other.
Well, I told them, you know, you need, I need 10 days, minimum, you know, and they're like begging me, I said, let me use the mayor.
No, no.
Okay.
We, we have specific.
I don't need your money.
We have, we have had the same issue with other people who want to bum rush filming permits, which will upset the neighbors, and they have a process, we have a process in place, and they can't just because they decide they want to film tomorrow, we're, we're not that cash starver.
Your urgency is not my urgency.
In this case, right, so if they want to follow our procedure, and notify all the neighbors, and get the proper signatures in the proper amount of time, that's fine for this board to consider, but they can't just force it down our throats like that.
I, I agree.
It just, it's not, it's not fair to the residents who are gonna be affected.
I know, I know.
Okay. Unless anyone disagrees.
And they're like, oh, we're small production, it's the only thing, you can interview him.
We treat it, we treat.
It's your problem.
We treat everybody the same when it comes to filming permits.
Yeah, I know, I suggested they get a hotel, they get a hotel suite.
We, we have a history of people trying to force their way through, we just can't, we can't do that.
Good, okay.
Rich, we're gonna backtrack, oh, Ronnie, we done with you? We done with you?
You're done with me.
Okay, because Rich is, Rich is back.
All I got is, um, road work, we're hoping to start, uh, next Monday, we're just waiting on a couple more submissions still from Stasi, and, uh, I believe Wednesday, me, Bryce, and Sam are gonna walk whatever work that, um, we're gonna start, probably be Chestnut or, if that's what we, you know, that we plan to, uh, things start there, so, that probably Wednesday, we're just gonna do a walk by and just kind of.
So we definitely shovels in the ground on Monday?
If all the submissions come in, he still has like five or six.
We just need to notify the residents like we do for every other project, so.
If he doesn't bring everything, if it's not completed by Friday, then.
All right, we'll keep, keep Ronnie in the loop, and then we will notify the residents either on Friday, if it's gonna be Monday, or we'll do it Monday, if it's gonna be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
And Middle Neck Road is supposed to be Friday.
So Middle Neck Road, they were supposed, they, they started with the drainage repair, they did a great job, because after the crazy rain yesterday, I walked out, and a lot of the water was going where it needed to go, and then go, went by this morning, you'll see, there was no water standing there anymore, so they did a good job. They were, they were supposed to have started, or finished the paving work today, and they decided not to tell us that they weren't going to pave.
We sent the notice.
And I emailed them, and they said, oops, so allegedly Friday, oh, I'm, I apologize, I didn't, I don't think I put you back in the loop, so it's Friday, uh, we'll notify the residents on Thursday, assuming that they confirm with us on Thursday that they're gonna start the work on Friday. Did you see the, did you see all the markings?
Yeah.
They're gonna rip up my, uh, my crosswalk, we're gonna have to repaint that.
That's what happens again.
Yeah, I saw the markings, I was not happy. Okay, but again, as we know for the village-wide construction, road projects, we'll, we'll go to further as in supporting them.
Well, they're supposed to also.
They're gonna send, put letters in everybody's boxes.
Yeah, they're supposed to do that as well.
Yes, but.
But I think we should.
But we need to do our public notification because let's say someone who's driving by Claire's house doesn't get that notification because they left some marks.
Hey, they're gonna go pick up their friends.